I think we have to have elections for the various positions, is that right? Okay.
I thought that happened in January.
December. Oh. Because it takes effect in January.
Oh, absolutely.
So hopefully we'll have more people here because it'd be great to have everybody vote and.
True.
Who knows?
Yeah.
Anyway, let's call this thing the order. We should do a roll call.
Nick Webb.
Here.
Mary Jo Phelps.
Here.
Mark Giaccone.
Here.
Lawrence Ulet. Barbara Sevilloff. Kristen Waterbury.
Here.
Joan Latte.
Here.
Uh, did we hear from Barbara?
Yeah, she said she was queen.
Okay, cool. Good, then we might even have virtually everybody here.
Mm.
And Lawrence, Larry. So first order of business is approving of last month's minutes. I understand Larry made a correction, so.
Yes.
That's already in the.
No.
My job is very far.
I'm sorry.
No problem. So hopefully everybody could review the minutes and we can, uh. Does anybody have any other corrections that are worth noting? Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm looking to approve the minutes. I want to make a little moving. Like a second?
Okay. Excellent. Any discussion? All in favor?
The state, right, you weren't there.
Okay, yeah.
I understand.
All I, all in favor, I? All opposed? All standing?
I.
Krista.
Krista.
Uh, alright, so the minutes are approved. Just a couple things, it's, uh, it is December, it's that time for the elections. So, um. At the end of this, we will all take nominations and we'll vote on who should be the chairman and secretary for the year going forward. Additionally, just from a, uh. Where we are and you'll hear it in the subcommittee for land acquisition, we're still working that thing real hard. As you know, there are three things that were sort of impediments to getting the land acquisition approved, deep. Pay us a check, et cetera. The first was the survey was not exactly accurate, and so they've come back. Deep has come back multiple times and our surveyors reacted to that. They, um, they put forward a new meats and bounds and survey. That I think is gonna, you know, this was two weeks ago, we're waiting on the department, the deep. Um, surveyors that look it over and sort of, um, give it the blessing. He may come, Larry was talking about it and said he may come back and need a couple more. You know, things sunk in the ground to really delineate the property boundaries, but I think we're in good shape. So that was the biggest, the second was. Getting ever source to agree to a right of way, permanent right of way. Um, I've been. I was carrying that era for a while. Because Gillian wasn't getting back to me, she is the person that is literally charged at ever source for approving right of ways and like. She was ghosting me, I called her, I wrote her, nothing between that. Turns out she was on a, an extended leave of absence, I don't know exactly the reason, anyway, she's back. And she's been very responsive, we communicated today. Um, she said she'd get back to me in a couple of weeks or a week to two weeks. And again, she sort of wants to do something temporary because we don't own the property yet. Once we own the property, I think we'll get more definitive responses. The third area was that there were incursions from Evergreen. Trailer park that was right next to the property that we wanted to acquire, there were three properties that impinged on our space. Um, and it shows up nicely in the survey. So I've been going back and forth with Evergreen and basically, um. Two things, one is I suggested that. We could, they need to write a quit claim to us that basically renounces their right to that property. Um, but we said if they did that, and I talked to the lawyer at the CLCT, if we did that. Um, we would also do something where they didn't need to address those three or four issues until after. Either the person that's in there right now moves. Or the structures that are on that property, our property, when. Need to be replaced, either of those two conditions, they've got to pull it back within their. Friends. And the reason I did that is, you know, these guys. Evergreen. These are not your multimillion dollar state kind of people, and so. Telling them to adjust, to tear apart their deck or their, that's a big thing. So this is a much more sort of palatable solution for all. And something I think they can sign off on and, and it'll be okay for us. So that's why I suggested to them, we'll see if they come back with it, they liked that suggestion. Um, today I got a note back that they sent it to their lawyers for, um, approval or writing it up. I think they want to write the quit claim as opposed to us writing the quit claim. Either way, it's fine. Um, so that's that. So those are the three things that are sort of gaining the way of us acquiring that property. Boy, I tell you, I've learned a lot from this process, it's not straightforward and, uh. You know, there's some other properties we want to acquire and it's just like, oh, I don't know if it's gonna be me. But anyway, that's, that's where we are. Um, so. Other than that, I look forward to hearing about what we're doing with Foodway, I don't know if we've had the meeting yet, MJ.
We did this morning.
Oh, great, so I, I look forward to hearing about that. And, you know, I've been away, so I haven't been real keeping up with things, so. Think that's it, oh, and I guess we're not gonna get Abby here for the update on the plan of conservation. Okay.
Yeah, she told me that this morning. So it will be.
Okay, so we'll, we'll pass on that for now. So those were my comments, now we can go to old business and with that residential food composting is top of the list.
Well, it was very cut and dried, it was just, there wasn't a lot that's new. He was just telling us about their procedures. One thing I do look forward to, I asked him. To give me, would he mind giving me the names? Of somebody I can talk to at the schools where they already do use blue earth. To see how much they've saved.
Right.
No, because Abby was asking him, you know, this kind of has to make sense.
So this is the Blue Earth guy?
Right, Sam.
Okay.
Yeah. And, um. And I did find out from Abby at the meeting that our net money is already claimed. It's already, so, because Sam had told me that some towns are using their, their net money. For.
Right.
School, uh, food scrap recycling, um, but ours is already.
Stalking for.
Yeah, so, um, you know.
Who knew net money was gonna be so big?
Oh, I know, right? I mean, it, it's, it's crazy. So he was just telling us how it works, but it was hard because John Cicliano wasn't there.
Right.
Um, the food service director, so. You know, we went through the problem of the compostable trays, which. Why would that have been a problem, but it is, and, and, uh. You know, it will cost a lot more to deal with the trays. So we might, we would, you know, we would still have the waste of the trays.
So anyway, we go back to non-compostable.
Well. John is open to anything, but when he tried. Plastic trays before and washing them, they had the problem that. You know, because these lunches are kind of fast and furious at these schools, right? And so getting them washed and dried and ready for the next work wave. Because there's not a lot of storage space, it's not like they can just have a wall of. Um, trays.
Right.
So. Um, I did see that some schools now are using aluminum trays that have little sections in them. And they are real thin, so they stack really nicely. I, you know, you, you have to see how much those cost.
Mm-hmm.
But, um. The cost is tripled, essentially, if you have blue earth, also take the.
The trays.
The trays. Tripled.
Okay, and did you especially get names out of the Blue Earth guy or not?
He's, he said he would email me some names, I think he wants to talk to the school districts first and make sure it's okay.
Okay.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, so. It, it was a nuts and bolts kind of conversation and, and, um. You know, Abby now has to. Talk to Maria, the superintendent, and.
Okay. Well, I mean. We have time, but this is the perfect time to be discussing it because A, it's budget season.
Right, true.
Uh, and B, it's a good time to get a grant in.
Right.
Um, because usually they get decided over the summer, so if we start working on a grant, we can get it in.
Right.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you're doing this.
Yeah.
Really am. Now, this mystical paper that Warren gave everybody. This is the collaboration with the Sustainability Committee, I've got another thing to discuss, but. You can see these are the weekly color coded too. But, you know, there, there is a lot of poundage going into that and that. So far for those four weeks, that added up to about sixty-two dollars. So if we can continue to get the word out on textile recycling. We can keep sort of driving that, so it's sort of like fifteen dollars a week is coming to coin. Not a lot, but it's something. Um, and it's also recycling all those things. It's, like I said, for me, it was just a wonderful way to clean out closets.
Mm-hmm.
I've got boxes down in my basement from like two moves ago, I have got to go through. I'm pretty sure.
Two moves ago, yeah.
I'm pretty sure, well, three moves ago, because, you know. Anyway, I'm sure there is some textiles in there that have been ending up in that, that bin, so.
Just take the boxes over.
But yeah, no, I mean, there's a lot, uh, it's, it's a good thing, it's something we should support and, you know, it's, it's not at the level of food waste recycling, but. You can see there's a lot of poundage actually made in the cycle of every, uh, every week, so that's great. In addition, the Sustainability Committee, and unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to participate. Because I've got just a barn burger of the weekend coming up, but this weekend is, uh. Uh, Clinton.
Christmas and Clinton.
But Christmas and Clinton.
Yes.
Um, you know, it's strange, I've been here five years and I've never been to this thing. Uh, but apparently. Between the new town manager, she's really into it and is really supporting it and driving it. As well as, um, the placemakers. Um, this should be a great show, but sustainability is arranged for a table. Um, part of it's gonna be towards food waste recycling. I would like to get. The ability to provide them with a compost, a kitchen compost. Like we did at the other event, so I'd like, if I could get a show of hands, or we could take a vote, take a motion. Um, I think the Conservation Commission would provide. That, um, and we've got budget for it, it's part of what we do, but.
And so then what, how would that work?
Um, they would do a giveaway just like we did in the last time we, uh, promoted food waste recycling. And the giveaway is the, the tabletop food waste recycling, uh, bin.
You should have people put their phone numbers on there because when I tried to deliver it to the.
Oh, my God.
Last time.
I've got.
Went like four times.
Much better way of doing it, I.
Oh.
This came to me overnight.
Okay.
Is rather than actually providing them with the real food waste compost bin. They put their addresses on the card. The winner gets drawn and I send it directly from Amazon to their house.
Oh, thank you. That, is that a sliver?
Yes.
Real good, yes.
No, uh, because I don't want us to go through that, I remember the, uh. The nightmare of delivering that to people, so. Um, anyway, so can I get a motion that the commission will provide a food waste compost?
So. So you're talking about like.
Eighteen bucks.
Oh, are they that inexpensive, okay. Um, I make a motion, uh, that we. Make an expenditure of up, should we give ourselves?
Say up to twenty dollars. It's definitely less.
Okay, but then they'll be shipping.
No, it's Amazon, so it goes.
Oh, wow, okay, so never to spend up to twenty dollars. On a countertop food recycling electric.
I have a second.
For the sustainment.
Well, certainly. All right, all in favor?
I.
All opposed? Okay, I'm gonna let them know that we got this approved. And this is the process and we'll go from there.
Are you going?
I can't.
Oh, oh.
I literally have the.
Because I have some flyers if they want, I still have the flyers.
Uh, if you get them.
Yeah.
Down in the.
I'll tell her soon.
Yeah, I'll tell her soon.
Alright.
When is the event?
Sunday, right? This is the first year that's, oh, I thought it was Saturday.
First time is.
Oh, okay.
Wasn't, so it's this February? The sixth, yes.
We used to go when our kids were little.
Really?
But we haven't been.
And what goes on, I mean, I don't even.
Oh, they have caroling and, you know, Santa's here and the big thing is the tree lighting.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah.
I, I wish I could go, I can't, um. It's my father-in-law's ninety-fifth birthday party.
Oh, it'll light it up.
That is something.
Be careful the candles on that.
Now, he's out, all, all of his friends, right? So you think, oh, who's he gonna invite to this? He had a hundred and sixty people on his list. So we've gotten to her at that a hundred and ten. But, yeah.
Sixty.
We've got family flying in from all over, I'm doing airport runs all weekend, so.
Okay, well, I'll reach out to Sue. Yeah, that's true.
Great, so we move on to new business and update on. Uh, plan of conservation and development, I don't think there.
Hold on one second.
Oh.
Do we, would you like to talk a little bit about?
Yeah.
The co- the conference that she might know about?
Oh, God, yes, yes.
I was ready.
I don't know where that fits in, but yes, it'd be great to have that.
Yeah, um, I attended the native plants in Palomeros, kind of on San Yukon, and it was fantastic.
Awesome.
I, at first I was like, oh my God, I'm gonna drive up there all by myself and all, it was really good, I mean, it was really worth it. And I can give you a presentation at some point if you want. But, um. Basically, I'll pass this around with the, um. What the topics were, but. It was very, very interesting because the, um. Agricultural experiment station was there with a lady talking about bees and just a small point about that, there's like. More than three hundred and ninety species of bees in Connecticut. And we talked about all the types and how they go to the different flowers and. You can have one flower that only one bee visits and the males, by the way, all they do is keep. After, the females carry the pollen, pollinators.
Of course.
Of course, yeah.
Mark, I don't know about you, but I'm just, I can't do it.
Anyway, there was something called specialist bees, they only visit a specific flower, there's so many things to know about bees. Okay, and as far as, I mean, these are all. This wasn't just pachyra information, this was some really good stuff.
It's very simple.
It was really good, there was some evolutionary biologists there from California. They flew in for this and they talked about making, like, there's land that has been wiped out from like strip mining and stuff and how they replenish it. And they do things like they cover it, like if you have one invasive species taking over. They cover it with topsoil and then they put this tea, they call it a tea, but it's really worm castings and everything to attract. All the native seeds again.
I betcha.
And, and then in that way, you get the diversity of like, they talked about poplars and all the things that used to be there. And then in California with the fires, they talked about how there's, um. Some. Plants that actually love fire and they chase fires and, you know, fire-loving and then other ones are. They grow after a fire just normally and. Um, but even better overall was this thing called, this, um. What's it called, cultivars, have you ever seen cultivars, like you could see like, well. Not a clone, but like, you go to the Bonneville games and they have all these beautiful hydrangeas and they're all the same. Well, they take, they find out how to get them like that, disease resistant, they test different species, they find one in the wild. They're not, they're not exactly like genetically modified, but they're. They take the best properties of all the flowers and they combine them. So that they can be hardy and sell them that way and do landscaping. And there was a lady from Maine there where some famous poet was. Has anybody ever heard of, um. In Hamilton, excuse my voice, I've been for a while today. In Hamilton, um, Broken Arrow Nursery.
Yeah, the Woodlands.
Okay. They went up to Maine and they're selling hundreds of different cultivars from, um, Mount Desert Island out there. And. I asked about, the lady's not here tonight, but she wanted to know what can go in the wetlands and compete there and I found one for her, it's called a. Native star. Yeah. Have you ever heard of that?
Yes, and.
And that will take over.
Right, and in, uh, I haven't asked it, if you go out to the, uh, Observation Day.
Uh-huh.
They've got a poster there. Of their native species that you would see in the wetlands.
Uh-huh.
And.
That's one of them.
That's one of them, so next time I go, I'll take a picture of it and I'll send it to you.
Oh, I'd love that. And then anybody that wants to hook up with the Yukon, what is it? I asked Abby what she wanted me to ask, but she said for money, but I don't know. And anyway, if anybody wants to scan this with their phone, you can get into their, um. The resources on Yukon IPM website, which is native plant and sustainability landscape guide.
Okay.
Which was, I mean, just, they went for hundreds, it was, there was someone there from, um, Virginia or Baltimore, I can't remember. Um, Mount Cuba Nurseries and they went into detail about. How to get the plants to work in different environments, like you can have these really good seed mixes, but you put them in your soil and nothing happens because you have the wrong kind of soil for them.
Right.
And they talked about how to, what to do to your soil to get this to grow, or if you're in a sandy soil by the shoreline. And, excuse me, and, um, you know, what you can. You wouldn't believe the amount of research they're doing. Okay, and then for our purposes, for the Palomero Pathway. Some of the flowers that we plant only attract like one bee, but you want like hundreds of different species of bees to visit, so they, that's how they choose different.
Well, that's the idea of the pathway. One person has this one, another person, you know, next door has something else.
Well, they, the, the rule of thumb on the pathway is that you put in. For each season. Three different varieties. And three of each of those because you want to have enough.
Very good.
Coverage.
Oh, coverage.
So that, uh, you know, if you take into account like three or four seasons. You know, that adds up to twenty-seven or, you know, thirty-six different species.
Oh, so you already, you already know one of them, because I did not, I was, I was amazed at this kind of stuff.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Well, beautification has some master gardeners.
Uh.
Will come and they. They're, they, they got their certification from Yukon.
Ah, well, okay.
Really great program.
Oh, and they're fabulous, and I went around and we did presentations with them. At the library and a couple other places, a couple churches. But I. I basically cribbed the, uh, is that the right term? Cribbed the, uh, the standard presentation from the Palomero Pathway, uh, organization. Um, and then we worked with them to modify it, they're specifically Clinton. So I'll see if I can get that and send that around as well, because that was, uh.
It's so interesting.
Yeah. And, and it was exactly what you were talking about, where there's a lot of varieties that look beautiful. In Connecticut, but they're useless as a pollinator.
Right, exactly.
Because they're Japanese whatever and just, you know. So. It's important to get the right species at the right time, you know.
For the right conditions.
For the right conditions, so.
And, um, like for example, who knew swamp milkweed is preferred by farmers, do you know that? There's different kinds of.
I actually did know that.
You didn't?
I didn't know that, I thought that was. And also, that's helpful at. Keeping. Japanese beagles away.
Uh-huh, it's just amazing the amount of biodiversity involved with this.
Right.
Depending on the ecosystem it's functioning in.
Yeah.
And, and, um, they talked a lot about having that destruction and then bringing it back. And also invasion, but they call it instead of just invasion by. What do you call opportunistic species, they call it exotic species.
And because they're not native?
Yeah, I don't know why they call it invasion by exotic species.
Okay.
Maybe from another country.
Yeah, I think that's probably the rightest.
Right.
Or another region.
Right, um, but. They're saying that what we're doing composting is fantastic because. The kitchen waste attracts, this is the basic point, worm kiss, worms.
Right.
Right.
Well, I, I don't know. I didn't, I just want, I knew that compost is good, but I thought it was just enrichment with minerals and vitamins or whatever.
All that, yeah, and worm kiss.
The worms are the best for, you know, your garden to, to best.
So three years ago. The compost piles at the dump. Were riddled with, you'd go to them and, you know, the, the compost's beautiful. But there would be weeds on top. Not anymore, because the. The food scraps and some of the other stuff I see going in. Has actually heated up the pile at such a level, it's killing the seeds for the weeds. And so now when you go get the compost, there's no weed seeds.
Right.
So.
That's good, that's really good.
Yeah. I didn't know it was worm passing, so that's good to know.
They actually made like this big experiments in California with the, they call it a tea, but they, you know.
I think I proved that.
It's, it's just, so that would be good for. Like for example, the shoreline invasives.
Right.
To cut, so what basically the principle is they cover it up with topsoil and then they receive, receive the native seeds and the regents and then it.
Also, an exotic badass of tops.
Yeah.
Not if it's free.
That's true, not if it's compost, um, yeah.
But they went over hundreds, maybe a couple thousand different species, hybrids and. Moronia swimsong, swan song, moronia gigantium, like. You know, if you go. you know, if you go onto this website, maybe you'll have a lot of this, and they showed you a lot of pictures and it was just fantastic.
I used to even have like a calendar like this, and you would know when that specific plant, you know.
Early blooming, yeah.
Oh, I've got a table. And we actually took that table, and it has that piece to it, but it also has things like, what is the size of the plant? Because you, you don't want to put your tall ones in back, and your short ones up front.
Right.
Right, you don't want to put the giants, and then you don't want to put something that's gonna like take over your whole yard. You know, like certain species are so hardy, they'll take over, but, but it would be good for a meadow.
Right.
You know, so you have to have the correct, they were stressing that environment, but I just really thank you guys for letting me do this, because it was like opening up a whole new world for me to. Retirement, it was great.
That sounds like it was really great.
It was really, really good, and then I sat with this lady, Master Verda from, she said she was a bowls designer from New York, I'm like, are you famous? And she's like, no, I only design sweaters. Sat with me and.
Hopefully quarter sips, but.
Well, um, a, a very interesting tribute is that, um, goldenrod, everyone thinks that radweed and goldenrod are both allergens, goldenrod has zero allergens, it's all radweed.
Yeah.
Goldenrod is good as a pow.
Yes, for sure.
So some people see the yellow goldrod, and oh my God, they're not, there's no antigen like there is for, um, radweed.
Oh, okay.
So they brought that up, so, for those of us with allergies.
Yeah, guilty.
Yeah, so thank you again for letting me go and.
Letting what?
Yeah.
Yeah, this very, I was like, very.
I was like, you know, I, first I got there, my, you know, it's my one day off, and I'm like, I hope drift or anything like that, but to be honest with you, I was like this all day, I was, I took like forty pages of notes.
Yeah.
And I was like so interested in it.
Really great.
Yeah, so thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay.
I can actually give a small presentation at some point if you want to go.
Yeah, love to.
Definitely, definitely.
Yeah, because there's like so many things.
I mean, you can.
Anything.
Yeah.
Do a little bit, okay.
That probably makes more sense for you, depending on how much work it is for you, right?
Oh, no, I love it.
Okay. But yeah, no, uh, pollinators are obviously, uh, near and dear to the Conservation Commission, we did get the Pollinator Pathway started in Clinton, um, and worked with Beautification Committee to get a number of these gardens going, so.
And the last thing would be that they, they will have a seed packet soon, available for.
Oh, good.
Areas, because I, that's what Abby said.
Yeah. I'd love to get some more samples.
Okay.
All right, so the next thing is any correspondence. I know you've been really good about sending stuff out and about, so, okay? All right, so the last thing before we adjourn for the, uh, Land Acquisition and Put Committee, which we probably won't have a forum before, um, but the last thing before we do adjourn is the elections, so.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
What does the town do with Christmas trees and wreaths, I mean, is there an effort made to, um, well, no, when people, not those gorgeous decorations, but when.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good question, I don't know the answer to that.
What, what does the town?
What do, is the town, may there be any effort for people to bring in trees?
Do they shred, uh?
Shred or? Is I mean, need or use?
I'm not sure about that.
Does it benefit?
That's a great question.
People bring them, people take them to the transfer station, they have a whole section.
So then people know to do that, you know, the wreaths.
Yes.
Just can.
Do you have to bend to them?
You think of us.
Oh, that's the. Think so? I don't think so. Um, I, I should, it'd be easy to check.
Yeah, no, it's a great question, I'll find out and I'll send it around.
But a lot of Boy Scouts.
That's what.
Come and collect.
Yeah, that's what you know, too. It's just hearing those truths.
Okay, good. So, uh, last order of business is the elections, and so we have two positions that are available right now. Chairman and Secretary. And so let's, let's put nominations on the floor, why don't we start with the Chairman position? So, any nominations? I'm very happy to step down at this point.
Oh, okay.
I'm happy to keep going, but I'm very happy to step down.
Look, you've done a lot.
What?
You seem like you've done a lot.
No, I think, you know, here's my pitch, is eventually we need to get somebody with a fresh voice. Because essentially I control the agenda and the meeting and the pacing and all of that. And somebody else might have very different ideas to where I would initiate you go, and that's fine too, and I would support that, so. I know when Kathy was running it, I think a lot of us felt like there would be a different path we could go on. And she'd been doing it for a long time, so, um, as, as a predator, I mean, really phenomenal amount of work. So, you know, I'm in that same position now where I've been doing it for coming up on four years now, so if somebody else would like to take the helm. You know, in the back of my head, I still want to get this land acquisition over the finish line. But I can do that, I'm now on the Land Trust Board as well, so I can do it that way, or I can do it through here, it really is not gonna stop, so. You know, Barbara or Mark or MJ, if you'd like to throw your hat in the ring, I'd love to support that.
Yeah, I, I, my husband is retiring in April, I'm already retired, and he's retiring in April, and I, I just I don't even know if I'm gonna do another term, I mean, I'm on until June anyway. So.
Okay, well, I hope you do. Really.
I'm too new.
I got put into the, I got put into Chairman in six months.
Would Larry do?
Pretty quickly, what's that?
That's right, we could all nominate Larry.
So, me, I have.
Great idea.
If you'd like to.
I think he's done it before, actually.
I think he has.
Twenty years ago, I think.
He's been on the Conservation Commission for a long time. And he really enjoys it. But he's also on the you know, Land Trust Board, and he's also, is he still on the?
Yes.
Historic District Mission?
He's on some, he's on the Democratic camp.
Yeah, but that, that's, you know.
That doesn't require him.
It doesn't. Showing us, showing us.
No, I don't think it's fair to nominate somebody.
Right. Is anybody interested?
I'm not, that's not my forte. Contribute another way.
Right.
I, I like the, um, technical stuff, you know.
All right, and I would, I would be okay being Secretary if we can find a Secretary, but, um, we might have to nominate you, Mr. Webb.
Okay. So are there any nominations on the floor?
I nominate now Webb to be Chair.
All right. I can't leave.
All of us.
Aye.
All right. I didn't vote. I'll abstain.
You could also ask Larry if he would.
I, I don't think he would, he's unbelievably busy right now.
Yeah, oh.
Actually, I have really phone calls with Larry. It's it's very intense. Okay, so, uh, that looks like it's all, so Secretary, do we have nominations for Secretary?
If anybody is interested in being Secretary, I'm I mean, I, I am open to it, but if anybody else would like to do it, what's that?
I nominate, okay.
Barbara, I nominate MJ, I started that. All right, uh, all in favor of MJ? Opposed?
All abstain.
MJ abstains.
So that, would that just take, um, taking minutes? The only time I have to take minutes is if there's a special meeting, if we, like, a sidewalk.
Right.
Or, you know, some other thing where there's enough of us there that constitutes for that. And that's the only time.
Yeah, it's pretty, uh.
Otherwise, we have the wonderful Lori.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was great.
Yes.
Oh, my God. And before her, it was Sherry, and she was great, so. Anybody heard from Sherry recently?
We, yeah, um, Kathy texts her every now and then, we keep in touch, she's busy with her daughter. And, uh, you know, but we, every once in a while, and they go back and forth, like Patriots are on and, you know.
So, there's a lot to talk about.
Yeah.
So, she's doing, she's doing well, hanging in there, honestly, she's busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this piece in here is great. I don't know who puts this together.
That's the Land Conservation Trust.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and we can, we can, we can throw those in too, I mean, basically, Clinton Events has asked us to put together pieces, the Land Conservation Trust is really a phenomenal organization. Big fan.
We may want to introduce ourselves, because.
Well, I have the whole time, we're Clint events. On the Conservation Commission.
I think I wrote one like three or four years ago.
We did the beach cleanup not that long ago.
Right, right.
That was great, yeah.
Oh, were you at that one too?
Yeah. Nice.
Yeah, I've never done anything like that before, so just like they're good community, like.
It is.
Right, yeah, right.
Well, I thought about the trees, because there's a piece about the annual festival of trees and wreaths, so just made me think about what, how they get collected. So this is a nice piece, and.
It's a beautiful magazine, I mean.
There is, I really liked how it.
And they really do rely on the boards and commissions for content.
Yeah.
Textile, was there a textile recycling in there, right?
Yeah, no, that's a great idea, we should probably, uh, work with, uh.
Sustainability.
Same, I need any of the food kind of.
Yeah, food waste, textile, all that stuff. As a matter of fact, both, we could write something on both of those things, that says, you know.
Gone like the spring.
People love those, they really.
Oh, yeah. It's almost like a coffee table magazine, I mean, it's so pretty.
Yeah, that was a good one, too.
Okay, I think, uh, there's no point in doing the subcommittee meeting, so we don't have Mike and Mike. Um, and Larry's not here, so it's just me and Mark, and that would not be a forum. So, I think we'll skip that, and then the next step is adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
That's it. All right, well, then. All in favor of adjourned the meeting?
Aye.
Opposed? We're closed up.